My microphone on. I'd like to call this April 21st County Council Meeting to Order. If everyone would please rise, we're going to have Councilman Byers lead us in a prayer. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, just thank you for this awesome community and just thank you for the ability to come together, Lord, just to work together to be able to make our community better and to do your work. Lord, just ask that you keep our first responders safe. Lord, just ask that you bless our nation, just help us to be able to heal, Lord, in a time of division. God, just ask that you just give us wisdom and discernment in our decisions as we try to make Dorchester County the best it can be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adoption of amendments from the April 7th, 2025 County Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor. There's, I just saw that hand go up. They're unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of a proclamation number 25-07 proclaiming April 25th, 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month in Dorchester County. I am going to ask Councilwoman Rita Mae Ranker, she will read that proclamation.
State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, proclamation number 25-07 proclaiming April 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout Dorchester County. Whereas, South Carolina's future prosperity and quality of life depend on the healthy development of the more than 1.1 million children residing in the diverse communities across our state and 39,317 in Dorchester County. Whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect must be a priority that requires individuals, families, child-serving organizations, schools, face-based groups, businesses, government agencies, and civic leaders to support the physical, emotional, social, and educational well-billing of all children. And whereas, child abuse is a serious public health issue with wide-ranging societal consequences as data show the link between abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of costly medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral issues into adulthood. And whereas, parents and caregivers who have a support system of family and friends know where to find public resources and understand how to remain resilient in challenging times are best equipped to provide safe nurturing environments for their children. And whereas, statewide and community prevention programs serve as proven and effective ways to reduce child abuse and neglect, no matter the geographic region, race, or ethnicity, or economic status. And whereas, in fiscal year 2023-2024, there were 7,498 sustained child protective surges investigations with 13,290 children in South Carolina and 255 investigations with 442 children in Dorchester County. Whereas, in 2024, Kay Phillips' Child Advocacy Center saw 1,764 total children and 695 in Dorchester County. Now therefore, Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout Dorchester County and encourages all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life of every child. Adopted this 21st day of April 2025 by C. David Cheness, Chairman, Dorchester County Council, attest Lona R. Conrad, Clerk to Council.
Is there a motion?
No move.
And several seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, and I will ask Dr. Phillips and her board members that are here present to please meet us up front. I think you have one or two with you. And everybody else is here for this. better to be providing those than what we have right here in this council.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
(Inaudible)
I'm not going to start.
Another six hours of work tomorrow. Hopefully she doesn't quit after four hours.
The next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution number 2505, a resolution confirming a commitment to take additional water capacity from the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency. And I will ask our newest councilman that no one down here has had an opportunity to meet probably, and that is Councilman Peter Smith, if he will read that resolution. Sir?
State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, resolution 2505, resolution confirming a commitment to take additional water capacity from the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency. Whereas, Dorchester County is a member of the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency, and whereas Dorchester County has currently water capacity allocation of 3 million gallons per day, and whereas the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency is planning to increase the capacity of the Finnish Water Treatment Plant located in Santee, South Carolina, from 8.5 million gallons per day to 12.5 million gallons today. Whereas Dorchester County needs additional water capacity to support community, economic development, public safety, fire suppression, and public health. Now therefore, being resolved that Dorchester County Council does hereby commit to paying the additional recurring costs necessary to reserve and secure additional 98 million gallons per day upon completion of the Finnish Water Plan Upgrade. Appointed this day, 21st day of April 2025, Chairman David Cheness, Dorchester County Council, attest Lona R. Conrad, Clerk to Council.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm going to ask if I can to get, I'm going to put him on the spot and ask Mr. Ward if he'll give us a little bit about that. I got a phone call here probably a month or so ago talking about the Lake Marion Regional Water Authority, and when I told them that we had water coming to Dorchester County from Lake Marion, I was told, but I didn't know what I was talking about. I'm going to let Mr. Ward kind of describe that, so somebody, so if they're looking, he's going to describe a little bit more of the Lake Marion Regional Water and what it means to the county and the fire hydrants we've put in and everything else as a result.
Mr. Chairman and Council, the county has been a member of that agency for well over 20 years, and we are fortunate to be one of the four counties and then also the town of Santee that is a member. The plant was originally put in service back in 2008 with an 8 million gallon capacity. Due to some upgrades in the membranes, they were able to increase that to eight and a half million. We're very fortunate because this project is funded 75% federal funding to 25% local funding for construction. As a result of that, with this project being substantially a 4 million gallon increase, the county would be able to secure approximately 69 and a half percent of that new capacity. And our portion of that match would be $854,902.13. We start talking about being able to secure capacity for that small amount. It seems like a very smart thing to do when 75 cents out of every dollar comes from the federal government, very specifically with your question about hydrants. Every time we install a line, Dorchester Reach, going from Harleeville down to Ridgeville, prior to that, water coming in the county split between Holly Hill and coming into Dorchester County at Harleeville down 453, we install hydrants. And again, as the resolution indicated, with Winding Woods as well, we install hydrants. So we've been able to install hundreds of hydrants along substantially about 80,000 linear feet of water line. And what that does is, as many of you are aware, we're in the fire service protection business, 40 points out of every 100 points for ISO ratings comes from the availability and proximity of water. Additionally, what that allows us to do is if people never take a drop of the water at their personal house, if there's a transmission line that's passing by them, it still improves their fire protection. The final component of that obviously is that it supports community and economic development. I mentioned Winding Woods, also the Ridgeville Industrial Campus where Walmart is located, and as you reminded me the other day, Sundrum Clayton as well, which was the original project there. So that is how we fill those elevated storage tanks. So this has been an environmental infrastructure project that Dorchester County has been able to participate in, again, for a number of years. The non-federal share associated with this project is right at $5,607,000. So significant savings to Dorchester County to be able to take advantage of 70% substantial of that capacity.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a thank you to Mr. Ward for being kind of that constant presence with the agency for, sir, how many years now? 23? How many years?
21, sir.
21? Gosh, it only seems like 23, but no, it is, you and just, there are a couple of others who've just been there constantly that have been able to make this happen, and it's just such a really huge benefit to not only our county but that region, and thank you so much.
Yeah, as a follow-up on that, I'm thinking that the only reason Volvo has water is because Dorchester County stayed the course back in the day when it was about to fall apart. Berkeley kind of crawfished on everything and then came back, if I remember right.
Mr. Ward's going to tell us about Letmon Lee with the Corps of Engineers, I think is going to be the next comment that he makes there.
So I'm going to say that there is an opportunity to have an interconnect between those two lines. That does occur at Dorchester and Berkeley on SC Highway 27. They were able to actually use the Mulberry system, but under construction currently is the Orangeburg-Berkley Reach down 176. That's going to further enhance that interconnection, and I'll leave it at that, sir, for the record.
Understood. And it does need to be said, this has been something, we've gotten some good help out of DC that's been bipartisan. Senator Graham and Mr. Clyburn have been instrumental in making this happen for the community, so we certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is, depending on which one you have, it says currency, but it actually is, it's me, and it's concurrency, growth boundaries, planning, and zoning. This is something I think I've spoken with most of you folks about. I actually am going to a public hearing in Columbia tomorrow, a public hearing, going to a subcommittee meeting on House Bill 4050. There's a version in the Senate, 227. It's been Spencer Wetmore out of Charleston County and Tom Davis out of Beaufort have proposed a amendment to current state law that basically allows counties to require concurrency in development. It's something that whether anyone realizes it or not, if you're paying attention, you would see, a lot of people may not be paying attention, but you will see that a lot of the things that Dorchester County has done over the last five or six years are in fact concurrency. We have put things in place, traffic studies and everything else that require those, but they are, as I say all the time, as I said in a video conference with Senator Davis, this is a little bit like eating an elephant one bite at a time. And that's how we have done this over the last five or six years, one bite at a time. The concurrency suggestion that they have in the state is probably not perfect. If you are looking for perfect out of the legislature, you will get nothing. If you are looking for good, you might have a chance to get good, and that's not a slide of the legislature, that is simply getting everyone in there to agree that it's all good for them and good for their communities, whether it be a municipality or a county. This one gives us the opportunity and gives us somewhat, with deference to the attorneys up here and in the audience, it gives us some level of coverage because it does give us a state backing of that concurrency. I've also challenged staff to look at a county concurrency ordinance so that we can roll these things that we've put out there under one umbrella, so that we're looking at that again. We ask for those things, whether people realize that or not. Some of the turn lanes, whether they're stacking lanes or center turn lanes are a result of the county requiring that of development. Does the development from 15 years ago have that same element? They do not, because those ordinance were not in place, they were not required at that time. This council here has done that, has seen fit to put those elements in place, to do those requirements, to require water and sewer capacity and upgrades to water and sewer and everything else that is part of any development coming before the county, coming initially before. And I saw Kiara in the back looking at those and saying, this is what's there. Has it been perfect? Absolutely not. There was one thing ever perfect in this world. That ain't it. I can tell you that. But in any case, it is, it continues to be something we're looking at as part of the concurrency. I can't tell you when, I'm looking back, a number of years ago, we passed an urban growth boundary for Dorchester County that said, we are not going to serve water and sewer outside of this area within the Ridgeville. I have tasked personally staff with looking at Harleeville and St. George as well, Reevesville for that matter. Ultimately, that may be a Reevesville-St. George connection there, but to look at the growth boundary where we will and will not serve today. That is not ever, that is today. That is based on the capacities there, based on the lines. Everybody says, oh, well, they'll run a line. We had that conversation a little bit earlier about the cost to run these lines. It is not pocket change. It is done very specifically, and they have to make certain, the builders are going to make certain that they can get their revenue back out of wherever they're running that line. And we have an advantage because we do control much of the water and sewer in Dorchester County. A lot of the counties in the state don't have the advantages that a concurrency bill would give them if they were able to say, we need this to happen. Planning and zoning, same way, this all kind of wraps in together, concurrency, growth boundaries, planning and zoning. If you look at the ordinance as they talk about things that we put in place that people's heads exploded, and we set a cluster ordinance, because it was, oh, no, we're getting greater density, and what we're actually doing is allowing builders to build things closer together, their infrastructure costs are less, people are still buying those products. So that is a market-driven thing, and ultimately, no one has to buy that house that's close to the next one if they don't want to live in, move into that neighborhood, but they are being sold at a rapid pace. Some of the ones that we may not want to talk about are selling hand over fist in areas that I wouldn't live. Probably most of the people in this room may not want to live, but they are in fact, people are buying them. People are moving to South Carolina, and you know, I know why. I've only ever lived here, so I get that part of it. But again, House Bill 4050, Senate Bill 227, that is not something we are doing, though we may do something as part of that, but if you, your legislators, I started to get a list of their names and addresses and emails to put up here, we can get them for you, to ask them to support 227 in the Senate and 4050 in the House. Again, subcommittee tomorrow, they believe it'll go to the full House on Wednesday. And that is all I have. So is there any questions up here in regards to those items? I think I, we've had one-on-one conversations at length about that one, so.
I'm just glad it said it's concurrency and not currency. I was wondering where we were going with that, so.
And I'm sitting back here looking at between Mr. Ward and Ms. Spasha sitting here in the audience, of an item that I did happen to jump over, and the next item on the agenda, the previous item that I'm going to touch on right now, is a public hearing concerning an application to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Grants, Administration Owner About May 5th, 2025, for a Community Development Block Grant in the Amount of $50,000 for Technical Planning Assistance, and I will open the public hearing. And Ms. Spasha, would you like to explain what I just said to everybody?
The Regional Planning Grant is the annual grant that comes from the South Carolina Department of Commerce that basically funds our work to help the county to implement Community Development Block Grant projects. So it's basically to help to increase the capacity for us and to help you all to go out and identify community needs, you know, promote and educate people about the requirements for fair housing, identify the projects, you know, either infrastructure projects or community enrichment projects, neighborhood revitalization projects, and even economic growth type of projects that you might have come about, and then to help you develop those applications, like the Stratten papers application that went in today. Today's Monday. So basically, you know, it's an annual thing that we do, you know, we try to do as much as we possibly can with it and to leverage that so that your projects can be developed and move forward and get that funding.
Thank you very much. I have two folks that have signed on the list that would like to speak to this. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to read your names out, have you come up, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes to have a conversation about this, specifically about this technical planning, Community Development Block Grant. The first item, the first item, first person is Ms. Deborah Whitfield. No?
I didn't sign that at all.
Oh, that's, you're on this, your name is on that. And then the next, I'm guessing that the...
Well, we have a sign-in sheet to document that with the signature.
That's, this is the County Council comments, sign-in sheets. It's the same way that it's looked for years.
It was this, and I updated it.
Okay. Okay. So this is what you may have signed in on initially. This?
I signed your sheet, and then she wanted us to sign another sheet. It's the same sheet.
This is the same, same item, same headings on both of them. So the next one is Barbara Halloran.
I don't want to talk.
Okay. All right. All right. Gotcha. Very good.
I didn't sign it, but I'd like to talk.
On the Community Develop Block Grant?
Well, something else.
No, that's, this is on, this is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant very specifically. Everyone else had to sign up on the list to be able to speak today.
Yeah, I know.
So, and that's unfortunately, that, I kind of, we cut it off when we start the meeting, so more than welcome to come back at our next meeting and address anything there. So, so let me just, is there anybody that wants to talk on the Community Development Block Grant? No, you sure? I'll give you one last chance, Ms. Whitfield. No? Okay. All right, so I will close that public hearing. All right. And that does not require a vote of council, so if anybody's wondering. Jumped over the next one. The next item on the agenda is Request to Address Counsel. I'm going to make an assumption that you intended to sign, you did sign for a sign-up. Is that what you were trying to sign up, the address? No? Oh, okay. All right. So I have actually two signatures on here. The first one is Ms. Arlene Wheeler, if you will come up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Arlene Wheeler, and my address is 377 Somerset. The reason I'm up here tonight is to talk about taxes in Dorchester County and the state of South Carolina. They are missing out a lot. The following companies are listed as public companies are traded on the stock exchange. Mungo Homes owned by Clayton Properties Group, D.R. Horton, Four Star and BRD, Lennar Carolinas owned by Lennar and Beezer Homes. The main purpose of agricultural zoning is to preserve farmland for agricultural production. Property held for development by a public company, even if used for agricultural purposes, generally cannot get agricultural zoning status. Agricultural zoning is primarily designed to protect and preserve farmland for agricultural production, not for development or speculation. Public companies are typically involved in development activities, which are often inconsistent with the goals of agricultural zoning. Act 388 for School Funding in 2006 says when a property is sold, it is reassessed, and the assessment is based on the sales price. South Carolina Code of Laws 117 dot, 1780 dot 1 says, "Real property which is ostensibly used for agricultural property but which is in reality used for other purposes is not agricultural property. The agricultural use of the property must be genuine in nature as opposed to sham or deception." County assessors use a lot of factors in determining this, but the Code of Laws for 117 point, 178 point 2 states, the qualifications cannot have more than 10 shareholders. All of these companies have more than 10 shareholders. Cannot have a shareholder person other than an estate who is not an individual, i.e. shell companies such as BRD, Charleston Timber, D.R. Horton, D.D. Timber, Four Star, and Iron Horse. And they cannot have a non-residential alien as a shareholder. Lyndsey Jarvis, CEO of BRD, major stockholder, is listed as being in New Zealand. Please note that the application submitted for agricultural does not ask these questions. Rollback Taxes Change 1121, now only a three-year period rather than the previous five-year period, advantageous to developers, saving two years worth of rollback taxes. Are the rollback taxes based on the market value or the county's assessed value? That'll bring you to the sheets that I put up there in front of your desk. There's three of them. One of them shows about 29 pieces of property. One of them shows about 29 pieces of property that are bought by developers, and their sales prices, but then their assessed, their tax values are down considerably. And then they have their assessed values.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then the girl from the tax assessor told me that they were going off of Google, that they had trees.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Thank you.
But this shows that the Google Maps are wrong. Some of this is 15 years old.
Next item, or, sorry, next item, not, I'm not going to get to that point yet. The next speaker is, I'm going to guess, and I'm probably going to, John Tolemy. If you'll come to the front, and your name and address. I'm noting this subject, and I will tell you that there's nothing new in that, but I'll let you go ahead, and I can respond to that as well.
No, thank you much. And again, my name is John Tolemy. I live at 113 Phoebe Drive. And just to kick off, I do want to thank the council. You've done some great things with the park systems here, Ashley River, the new Pine Trace Park. So there's a, I sense there's a real commitment on the council to preserve nature and give people that live in this community a wonderful place to live and enjoy enjoy life here. I live in the Ponds community, and what I what I wanted to ask the council is to protect our habitat. We've had commitments from Colter for many, many years. It's still, still, they're still advertising things this way, where we're supposed to have 20 miles of trails. And I'm a hiker, I'm a walker, and every time I go for a walk, I find the trails that I love are, they're gone. And the way that they develop, and I think you made a point earlier, it's basically they clear the land, all these, these beautiful live oaks, this habitat that you you all are protecting, by the way, they are destroying in the ponds. So we have no say, the HOA, we don't control it, you are our partners, you are our representatives, and I am looking for a plan where we will find our 20 miles of trails that they have been selling to over 1,000 homeowners and current homeowners. It's an ethical issue. We've had this conversation before, and of course, Colter's perspective is sidewalks are trails. Remember that conversation we had not so long ago? If that's how this works, then New York City has the highest concentration of trails in America. That's not the deal. So I want to, I want to, I want to ask you to protect this. I know they've got some new deal they've cut. I know they're wrestling with the school issue, and it's a tough issue, but they owe us a pool, and my fear is that Colter will basically cut and run. If you, if we don't hold their feet to the fire, and you have held their feet to the fire, you held back their ability to have housing permits, they need to meet their commitments, and I truly hope that this council, because of what you've done for the parks, and you've, you have helped us in this last round of negotiations, will stand tall and help us because we can't protect ourselves. You are our guardians. So I'm just asking this council to stand tall and please protect our ecological community. It's a, it was a beautiful place. I cannot go down the Ashley River anymore. It's gone, that trail's gone. I can no longer walk around that beautiful trail around that first lake. It's gone. And they do clear, they do not protect the live oaks. I don't know how they cut down these live oak. They're, they're gone, folks. These are trees that are 300 and 400 years old. You will not replace them in our lifetime, and they're gone. So I'm just saying, I don't get it, but I'm begging you all to protect our habitat.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you. And I just, and I would, and what I, because it did say something about a new development agreement, the only development agreement that's in place is the one that 2023.
Yep.
Is the only one that's been approved. That's the only amendments that have been done to a development agreement. There is not any amendments before us or anything else. So thank you very much, sir. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward?
Mr. Chairman and Council, after a very, very long time, there will be a ceremony held at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, April 25, on the top of the newly constructed overpass for the Berlin G. Myers Ribbon Cutting. So I wanted to remind you all in the public that that is going to take place. That is an SC DOT project, but the county did provide significant funding for that project of approximately 35 million from one cent sales tax.
Which has been paid, correct? Have we done both tranches that were done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is guests, and our first guest is Ms. Denise Christmas. And we're going to, she's going to introduce the rest of the staff after she gets done.
Hello, good evening. So I'm here to present the financial report. Through March of 2025, which is 75% of our fiscal year lapsed. So for the general fund, our revenue collections are at 74.4%, which is right on target for this time of year, and our expenditures are at 69.9%. We've collected 87.4% of our property tax revenue, and we believe that we will collect 100% by the end of the year. Our library fund has property tax collections of 87.9%. Overall, revenue collections of 79.7% and expenditures of 57.8%. Our capital fund has revenue collections of $5,892,520, which is 51.1% of our budgeted revenue, and our expenditures are at 53.6%. Our fire fund has collected 81.6% of its revenue and has expended 68.2% of its budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has collected $41.2 million, which is 66% of their budgeted revenue, and has expended $62.2 million, which is 99.6% of their budget. The Water and Sewer Impact Fee Fund has revenue collections of 70.3% and has expended 17.8% of its budget. Moving on to the Stormwater Fund, our revenue collections are 47.5% and our expenses are 37%, well under budget there. Our Solid Waste Fund has revenue collections of 76.6% and expenses of 41.8%. And our ARPA funds through the month of March, we have expended 88.8% of those funds, and as you recall, we have committed 100% of those funds for projects, various projects. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
So I'll, I'll introduce Adam. Mr. Adam Davis, Capital Projects update. I won't ask you about Pine Trace since I've already asked you today, but you can tell us about it.
I'll tell everybody else. All right. Good evening, Chairman, Chairmen, and members of council, Mr. Ward. Under Capital Projects Report, I'll start with Mix Use Development at 500 North Main Street. As you are aware, the developer continues to work with the town to gain approval of the master plan. Currently, we have staff doubled and tripled up in offices, conference rooms, council chambers, and HR currently has an office space in a hallway. We were relocating some departments over to the old D Heck Wing as departments have added staff, and they will continue to grow. We are doing some cosmetic maintenance in that wing, such as drywall work, painting, since we currently don't have a project budget to upgrade the facility, since the third maintenance in the building and equipment has exceeded its life expectancy, its useful life, which has become a daily operation, interruption to operations. Moving on to better news, the new Coroner's Office, county staff held a pre-construction meeting on April the 17th. The site contractor will mobilize this week, and a groundbreaking will be held in May. The Oak Brook Sports Complex, county legal team continues to work with land plan and DES to complete restricted covenants. CCC approval was granted at the end of March, and we are awaiting the land disturbance permit. Pine Trace Park, asphalt drives are now complete. Dominion Energy will be on site to set the transformer and start side lighting tomorrow. Testing of systems will be completed once power is installed. Painting tile work, paneling, irrigation, sod, seating will be completed next week. The longest lead time we have right now is on playground equipment. That will be in next week and installed shortly after. St. George Rural Healthcare Facility, county is in receipt of all permits from the Department of Environmental Services. Staff continues to work with USDA to meet all requirements and approvals for construction commencement. Station 8 in Ridgeville, staff plans to give a notice of intent this week to start designing the renovation of the fire station. Summers Corner Fire EMS, CCC approval was granted. Notice to proceed was issued to design-build. ADC continues to work with the Department of Environmental Services and other agencies to finalize comments and revisions. Land disturbance will be issued by the end of the month. Swan Drive Kayak Launch, a ribbon cutting will be held tomorrow, so please bring your pearly whites or mellow yellows for pictures tomorrow as we open this addition to the Parks and Recreation Portfolio. Veterans Facility, county staff will hold a meeting on April 23 to discuss design and next steps. That's all I got for you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Quick, just a quick follow-up on Summers Corner Fire EMS. What do we think in ETA for groundbreaking their ballpark?
Probably about six weeks out.
Six weeks out?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. And and the next introduction, it's my, my pleasure to introduce, I think, in Dorchester, in Somerville, council chambers for the first time is, and and not that you haven't seen her standing up here before, but I'm introducing our new newest Public Works Director, Ms. Sunshine Tracus.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Good evening, Mr. Ward, Mr. Chairman, and members of council. I'll be providing the public works updates. For First Bend Road and Rice Mill Drive, final design is 90% complete. We submitted an application in March for a basic infrastructure grant, and we are awaiting the award results. For the design-build bridge replacement package on Summers Drive, Pointer Drive, and Deer Run Road, right-of-way acquisition and permitting efforts continue for all three bridges. The Deer Run Road Bridge is now load restricted based on DOT's last inspection, and the contractor is currently installing the temporary access road from Deer Run Road to Hazel Team Bend. And that's for the vehicles that exceed the posted weight limit, and that work is expected to be completed by the end of this month. For the Ashley River Park Connector, we received the 60% design plans from the engineering consultant, and we are coordinating with the utilities to review areas that may be in conflict. For Latson Road Streetscaping, we've received our DOT encroachment permit for both the streetscaping as well as the median landscaping. Dominion is preparing the street lighting plan, and once that plan is available, will include the conduit needed for the lighting into our construction plans. And so I anticipate having that project ready for bid this June. For Oak Brook Wayfinding Signage, we received our DOT encroachment permit for the county's signage, and the town is addressing, hopefully, their last round of comments with the DOT. And our goal is to bid both wayfinding projects as one so that we can get better pricing from contractors. For Spring Road, construction continues, and the contractor is currently placing the earthwork to raise the roads to the proposed grade. Construction is expected to be substantially complete this December. For Maple Street Widening, the contractor has been working three crews day and night, placing drainage on both sides of North Maple Street from Highway 78 to the end of the project at the interstate, near the interstate. They're also removing old drainage curb and gutter and working on placing fill on grade to the new road width. For Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, we completed the hydraulic modeling and met with the Corps on March 5 to go over our modeling results. We did make a few design updates based on the Corps' feedback, and we're preparing our 408 permit package for submittal. We're also nailing down our schedule to hold an online public meeting for the project. For SC 27 Widening, we've been corresponding with the EDA in the review of our construction bid package and expect to receive their approval to bid hopefully any day now. We've addressed all their comments, so I'm just waiting any response from them. In early March, we were made aware of a northern long-eared bat environmental permit condition that prohibits tree clearing from April 1 to November 14. So that would have delayed our project for almost a year. So we, we executed an emergency procurement with Banks Construction, who's doing work at the interchange end of the project, and they were able to complete the clearing work before April 1. For US 78 Phase 3A, right-of-way acquisition permitting, utility coordination, and final plan development continue. For US 78 Phase 3B, title searches are underway for the 93 impacted tracks. The right-of-way agent has been sending out initial contact letters to the property owners as the title opinions are received, and about half of those contact letters have been sent out so far. For Central Avenue and Parsons Road Improvements, field surveys were completed in January, and we're developing the concept plans that we plan to share at a public information meeting. We're targeting June 10 to hold that public information meeting. We were originally scheduled earlier, but DOT has asked to review those plans, so we'll share those with them to get their approval before we go to the public. For Dorchester Road Improvements, we're still working to update our traffic study and concept plans to consider interchange alternatives at the Latson Road and Old Trolley Road intersections. We expect to have these finalized by the end of April so we can submit that to DOT. For Delamar Highway Improvements, field surveys and environmental field studies are continuing through April. We're preparing an agreement with the homecoming developer for Delamar Highway Widening from Ashley Ridge High School to Clayfield Trail, which is something they're responsible for constructing as part of their traffic study. So we'll develop an agreement for that, and under that agreement, the county would continue to manage the whole project, but homecoming would fund the section from the high school to Clayfield Trail. For Linger Longer Drive Extension, the engineering consultant has submitted the 60% design plans and they're under review. For Main Street Improvements, between Carolina Avenue and Luke Avenue, field surveys began April 1, and property owners along the corridor were notified by mail, and we expect those surveys to continue through May. For Miles Jamison Road Improvements, subsurface utility surveys continue, and the engineering consultant is preparing a concept plans alternative that we'll share at a future public information meeting, and we have not yet determined that date yet. For Orangeburg Loop, aerial mapping surveys were completed in January, and the remaining field surveys are wrapping up. The engineering consultant is moving forward with developing those concept plans. For Stalsville Loop, the field surveys are complete, and we're developing the preliminary plans to present to the public in the next few months. For 17A Widening, environmental and subsurface utility surveys continue, and we will also have some geotechnical borings to complete, which will be done as nighttime work. For 17A, the Village Ponds Drive Temporary Signal, that signal was installed and went to full activation on March 11. And at West Scott Boulevard, preliminary plans are being developed, and we are targeting late July for the public information meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
She had a list, so hope you all wrote that down as she was talking there. Myers.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sunshine, congratulations.
Thank you.
On, on your promotion, so glad to have you as Public Works Director. Quick question on the Bacon's Bridge pedestrian connector timeline for when that might actually start construction. Are we able to confidently ballpark that yet?
I would say not with a level of comfort yet. There's a, a water tunnel that we found out that is somewhere in conflict, so we've got to revise our plan, which I think we can do.
Okay.
But I'd like to get some confirmation first and make sure we're good there before I can.
Okay.
Say that with confidence.
All right. I'll ask you a different one. Maybe, maybe this is an underhanded pitch. How about that 408 permit for Sawmill Branch Trail Extension? What do we think in timeline?
So we should be able to submit that, I'm hoping, here in the next few weeks. We've got, as part of that package, we have to include no objection letters from the non-federal sponsors, which are us and the town. So we received ours, and got to get with the town to get theirs submitted, and we should be ready to submit, I'd say, by the end of the month, hopefully.
After submittal, what do we think in?
So originally, the timeframe is probably our critical path, but was told about a year. I think we can expedite that based on some conversations we've had with the Corps, so we'll keep in touch with that. And I think us trying to minimize those impacts with our design updates will help that as well.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Anything else?
The last comment I was going to make about Ms. Tracus is I was, had the opportunity to meet with one of her former, I guess he might have been the supervisor, and when I suggested to him that he may, she may be our newest Public Works Director, he was over the moon excited and said that we had the best selection of his group prior, so congratulations again.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, my fellow history guy, Mr. Larry Harper.
Good evening, council. Glad to be here. April 21st, 1836. General Sam Houston and his Texans out number two to one defeated the Mexican army commanded by General Santa Anna in the Battle of San Jacinto. This victory ensured the independence of the Texans from Mexico. So to kind of go through the Capitol Projects, second phase of Barret and Stratton and Barret Street, the county contract has completed the mainline installation along Barret Street. All permits have been received to extend an eight-inch line down acid phosphate, and the contractor is working on schedule to get that piece completed. Regional Water Connection Phases One and Two, Phase One, we have a bid opening scheduled for this Thursday for that particular project, and the Phase Two design is ongoing. From DSS to Pump Station 4, Force Main, RH Moore was scheduled to start Phase One work in March 25. We had a bid opening for Phase Two on the 17th, and the bids are currently being evaluated. So we expect phone calls as we start construction along Orangeburg Road. Hollyville Pump Station and Force Main Reversal, we are working to record the plat for the pump station property. That final design is ongoing. For the line going from 15 to the 26 interchange, we still have design coordination going on with the project engineer. For our line at Highway 78, water line extension, that line is actually still underway. We've got all our permits completed, so we can access our construction on that soon. If you looked at the pumps at Lower Dorchester, we are probably at 35 point, 38.5%. Pour-in-form activities along the sledge-holding tanks, distribution box, pretreatment facility, UV structure, the maintenance building steel structure has been erected, and it's scheduled to be coated. If you haven't had a chance to do the ride-by, you will not recognize the site. The maintenance building is a site to behold because it's one of the largest structures on that site. For the Maple Street Relocates, we've got a partial PTO received. We've got a record drawings received, reviewed, and returned comments, and the contractor is working on the punch list items to submit the closeout documentation. For PK and Tree Site Extension, working to submit the fees to final lines, final lines to railroad agreements, and receive the railroad permit. Ongoing coordination between the county and the design team. Obtaining railroad permits is interesting. If you remember that the railroad companies believe they can control time, the reason we have time zones now, trying to get permits out of them, you can understand the challenges that can be faced. Pablo Grove to Red Top, contract is mobilized on site, clearing and grubbing, and construction activities is on the way. For Pump Station 72, that is actually closer to 92% complete. We've actually tested that pump station. It's being placed in operation. Demolition is occurring, and hopefully complete that project in the next 100 days, the time of closeout. For Pump Station 10, influence rehabilitation, still got project, we're still developing those projects. We have identified several manholes for our renovation that we're going to be doing. Pump Station 20, Force Main, re diversion. We've got a notice to proceed from RIA on March 20th. We are expected to advertise that project by the end of this month. We have actually received both the SC DOT and the NPDS permits are now in hand. Reissue of water line upgrades, Phase One, we are probably 60% design completion on that. Shaded Grove to 178 Pump Station and Force Main, we are still waiting on permits for that one. Our project is at 85%, ready to go. As soon as we can get those permits, we'll push it to 100. Summer Haven Waterline Improvements, we've got our easement exhibits have been created, and we've got the project design sitting at 60%. Sweet Prior, Sweet Prior Subdivision Sewer Main Extension, contract has completed about 60% of the gravity line installation. That project is actually ahead of schedule. For the water line replacement in the Pepper Ridge area, that project design is about at a 30% milestone. Currently, that's actually reviewing in-house of the changes that need to be made. And for the water main extension to the DC Career School Technology Center, Hollyville Middle and Elementary School, the contract is working on submitting the closeout document so we can obtain a full permit to operate. And for the Wining Roads Project, contract has continued to do restoration and punch list items so they can follow, pass final inspection and close out that project. That's been a challenging one. With that, that completes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Harper.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and council, I have several items for your consideration. At first is a motion to appoint and commission John Gray as a code enforcement officer to issue summons for the Dorchester County Codes of Ordinances, Chapter Four Animals, and Chapter 14 Environment pursuant to the SC Code of Laws, Section 4-9-145. Ask you to appoint and commission.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If you please stand, sir. Thank you for your service. Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Dorchester County and the town of Ridgeville, South Carolina for Traffic Impacts, Road Maintenance Management Review, and Storm Order Review. We currently have an agreement in place for the storm order review. They have been using our traffic impact analysis standards. They had asked that we also consider doing road maintenance management and review, and so ask for your approval of this agreement with the understanding we may come back to you in the future with a subsequent agreement related to us managing projects on their behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the motion include the authorization for the county administrator to make such modifications and amendments as he deems appropriate to that document with the concurrence of staff. That document is not going to the town yet. They may have comments coming back, and I hate for it to have to come back to council if they're not material.
Okay. Motion to approve is amended by Mr. Frampton.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think the only thing I would say is you will note very specifically Town of Ridgeville. The administrator and I met with Mayor Hart in St. George, very similar situations. This lack of a better, not very boilerplate type language in this that would allow us to ultimately enter into these agreements with the other towns to do that, basically, and the conversation is these smaller towns don't have the ability, don't have the road. We don't have, we're not paving roads in the county ultimately. We manage those projects ultimately, and Sunshine is very happy of that. But other than that, the ability to do that for these municipalities in the county, and that really is what this is doing, is saying that these towns are meeting the county guidelines for roads. So it's not, it's not a guess. It's not they're going to do what they want to do, and we'll accept them. They're actually going to meet the guidelines that we put in place for roads and storm order in this case, so. Jeff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just, you know, we're doing some heavy lifting for the towns. They just don't quite have the staff and the manpower to be able to do certain things. There's going to be some costs associated with that. Are we recovering those costs from the municipality?
Those costs are included in the contract. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just wanted to double check that. Thank you.
And the same, and again, to even address mine in the future, if we do manage projects, there's cost involved with that. Ultimately, we aren't, they would be agreeing to fund those, that management from that standpoint, so.
So.
Chair? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Ward, go ahead.
I was just going to further answer Mr. Byers' question, and that's included in B-5, where it specifically talks about for the Public Road Acceptance Program, a fee of $1,000 for roads within developments up to 500 linear feet and an additional $2 per linear feet over that amount to be paid to the county by the town.
Follow-up. At what point do we cut that umbilical cord to where they're actually taking over these things themselves? Is there any kind of a trigger that they need to hit so that we don't just keep doing this ad infinitum?
That is something that can be revisited as they're able to monetize the ability to hire staff. We had talked with one of the towns about that being a process within about five years very specifically.
Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Byers' point, for the roads specifically, would this be something that in terms of qualifying funding to support, meaning like C funds, or to help them get across the finish line? Or is that something that we could, or because where I'm going with that is, we're working with the comprehensive plan and the growth management plan. It seems, I mean logically, that we would incorporate the roads with that as well, but it says, as I'm reading on the amendment 4D, that that's, we're not doing the roads. Is that correct?
So, and I think I can answer that for, because having been in those meetings, we are not currently, they're going to, but we don't build roads. We hire contractors to build roads. They would, they would build the roads to the standard, so they would still hire contractors built to the standards that we put in place. My initial discussion with the mayor of St. George, or our initial discussion, we talked about their ability to, quite frankly, to, for them to pave roads. Well, as I came upon this, we don't pave roads. Again, we hire contractors. So the ability to potentially, not in this current agreement, but the ability to manage that for them at a cost for our management is certainly there, but it is not, it would be, and ultimately, that cost in all of these cases is passed on to a developer as part of a development agreement. They say this is what it's going to cost, whether they bond the roads out for a long term, that ultimately, at some point, you know, this is what it's going to cost for these roads to be accepted, but we go through that. They, we will never accept the roads into the county system from the towns. The town councils will ultimately have to accept their own roads based on what they've collected, what they will collect, what those, that potential is, and we're going to try to help them to make sure that they don't make.
Okay, so that's the amendment language to say that we're part of the discussion to help that management process, correct?
Excuse me, was to make sure that the document that's in council packages may not be the final document.
Right.
Inasmuch, it is really, as I understand it, that document has not gone to the town yet for their review. They may have changes they want made to it, and assuming those changes are acceptable to the administration in consultation with county staff, I did not want to have to bring the document back to county council if it was merely, you know, back and forth negotiation, clarification, explanation, whatever it may be. And that's was the purpose of my requesting, that that addition be made to the motion to allow the administrator to make such, such changes as he deems appropriate, but the idea of the document would be voted on tonight.
Awesome, thank you. So where my head was going, Mr. Chenis, Mr. Ward, thinking long-term, having, or maybe even modifying the language, so we are a part of the discussion in terms of roads so that, and if I heard you correctly, that would not fall under the county purview, but we would have the language in there from the onset that we would be part of the discussion.
So I just want to clarify what the requirements are. So the county has road and drainage acceptance standards. The county has a TIA process. The county has a municipally separate storm sewer system. With respect to the storm sewer system, they already are following our standards because we collect the fees outside of Somerville and North Charleston to have their own programs. So our purpose in doing this agreement is kind of threefold. Number one, it requires, in this case, the Town of Ridgeville, but to Mr. Chenis' point, anyone that we perform this service for, to adopt our standards, because we're only going to expect to our standards. However, at the point that we believe a recommendation is appropriate at the end of the maintenance warranty period, we would then make a recommendation to that particular town council, and then it would be their responsibility to accept that road. Mr. Frampton will appreciate this comment. We do not inspect private roads. So this agreement is for public roads only, no private.
We don't.
Yeah, so I want to be very clear about that. And so with that understanding, substantially with them adopting our standards, and then our staff being paid to perform these inspections, we would make recommendations to the town for roads and drainage to be accepted by those towns into their maintenance systems. What we were talking about is subsequent to this agreement, there has been some desire expressed, could the county manage projects at a point when they required maintenance? And that would have to be in a separate agreement. This agreement does not contemplate that. This is an acceptance agreement based upon them meeting the standards and then us making a recommendation.
And I would say the recommendation based on, quite honestly, if we were going to manage them in the future, would need to be based on the fact that the recommendation was made from the county to the towns to accept the roads, and they followed those recommendations, and they didn't say, yeah, or they looked at this road, and they weren't built to the standards, and they, well, we'll take it anyway. That ultimately would be one that we would not want to accept the management for because that would get even deeper. I don't think, honestly, I don't believe that any of the towns have, they don't want that to happen. I'm relatively certain that none of the towns want that to happen, so. Good night. Motion and a second. I'm just, any other? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Final item I have for your consideration is a first reading referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for Public Hearing and Recommendation of an Ordinance to amend Dorchester County's Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance. Ordinance number 0413 is previously amended with respect to Article 21 Required Improvements Construction Standards to amend Section 21.4. This item will also need to be recommended to the planning commission for them to make a recommendation prior to third reading occurring by council. So this is to then change our road design standards so that the final lift of asphalt is uniform without any patches. That's the goal of this. This is something that was reviewed by our new Public Works Director. So our recommendation is to do this referral with the understanding that additional revisions may have to occur prior to third reading.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, just for clarity, this is where we talked about going from a two-inch asphalt base to three inches and doing that final surface after the development is completed.
Yes, sir, this is basically, and Mr. Byers and I were in a meeting when this was actually recommended as a way to handle this, because one of the challenges we have in the new developments is they finish the roads, and they're still doing construction, and those roads get torn up, and they patch those roads. So those roads are not of a very good quality. This one allows them to do the three inches.
It does, and so once you get to your 75% build-out, we'll do an inspection. Once then install the final lift, we will have an additional 12-month maintenance warranty period. So to be very clear, this is what we believe is going to allow us to have better roads without the patches.
The final lift, the final layer of asphalt, that's.
I'm sorry. This is the final layer of asphalt to match up with the curb and gutter. I apologize.
So what you're saying is it won't look like a checkerboard?
It will not, sir. It will not be, none of us are Tennessee fans.
Won't look like, it won't look like the first, won't look like the first section of Summers Corner. So any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and. The next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir. I have a recommendation to appoint Mr. Brian Norwood to the Foster Care Review Board.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Any further appointments to boards and commissions? Are there any additional motions? Mr. Byers?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Ahoof.
A second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous and adjourned.